And we'll start this regular meeting of the North Little Rock City Council. And with that, I say all council members that are present, Ms. Whitby, in order to ensure that, you want to call the roll for us.
Gibson.
Is present.
Yildin.
Here.
Dobbins.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Berry.
Here.
Bestel.
Here.
Hite.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
The quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Can I, so we stand for the prayer to be left to Alderman Gibson, followed by the pledge by Alderman Yildin?
Let us pray. Our most gracious family father, we thank thee for the opportunity to live in a free country. We ask that you be with those who are serving overseas and they do all right their duties. Be with this city council as we work on the business of the city. These things we ask of you now and then.
I pledge my name to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alderman Gibson moves. Alderman Witcher seconds the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Any discussion on the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Dobbins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Uh, we're on to a couple of presentations without objection. Let me recognize, Dean, Edwards. Dean, you got here just right smack dab as the clock struck the magic hour. Microphone's yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, I'm getting ready to introduce the gentleman who's going to make a presentation to you, Mayor. But first, I'd like to thank a few people that brought this award about. One of them is Connie Woodard with the North Little Rock Electric, Robert Bowles with the Planning Department, Bob Rhodes, the North Little Rock Parks, Charlie Hite contributed with his City Beautiful. I'd like to recognize the tree board members here tonight. Charlie Ball, Winston Hughes, they're sitting right back here. Bill Moses, our chairman, and Dick Blankenbecker, I think he had to go to church tonight, or he'd be here. At this time, I'd like to introduce our county forester with Arkansas Department of Forest, a service, Steve Burgess. Steve, could you come up here?
Why don't we ask the members of the tree board to come on up too, if we could, so everybody can see you.
Mr. Mayor, Steve Burgess, the Arkansas Forestry Commission. On behalf of the Arkansas Forestry Commission and the National Arbor Day Foundation, I would like to present you this award for growth, where we have been a tree seed for eight years now. That's eight years longer than Little Rock has.
Are we trying to...
That's right. They're trying to catch up now, but they're gonna have a hard time doing that. So, congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Stephen, and particularly the members of our tree board, we're very proud of what we've been able to do in partnership with the Arkansas Forestry Commission, our own tree boards, the board of the city council, and certainly our community. We care a lot for urban growth, and trees are great friends of ours. We don't like, we don't like losing them, unless it's absolutely necessary. When we do, we like to add tenfold to that loss. So, let me ask that all of us give the tree board and all of what they do a real round of applause. We appreciate it.
Also, I'd like to present you with this flag, and we have some other material I want to give to Dean, and they can use those to emphasize this throughout the city.
We're proud of it, and proud of our partnership, y'all. Thank you very much, Dean. Appreciate it. John Swanson, John, you're here with...
Yeah, I see ya. We've got a little presentation, annual presentation. John comes over on an annual basis, and it's gonna tell us about a rate increase that has already been implemented, and some of the reasons for it, and some of the projections financially for MEMS this year, and the service levels we're working on. John, the microphone's yours.
Thank you, sir. I'm John Swanson, the executive director of MEMS. Thank you for the invitation to provide the annual report. Slide, please. I do have a lot of information to cover, so please feel free to interrupt with any questions as we go through, and I'll be as brief as I can. If you'll hit it three more times, Diane, please, it'll show the overview. System performance, one more time, and our preparations for bioterrorism, and we do have the Medicare issue ahead of us as a significant future challenge. Slide, please. Just a quick reminder, Deloitte Sykes is present tonight. She's one of the North Little Rock representatives. Harrison Dean, I know, wanted to make it. He must have had something hold him up. Those are your two city of North Little Rock representatives on the MEMS ambulance authority. Slide, please. Again, we're much more than a 911 ambulance response system. Slide. This will show how North Little Rock fits into the overall MEMS system of 39,000 runs last year. City of North Little Rock is about 21 percent of that total, a significant part of the MEMS system. Slide. And this shows the breakdown of those 8,226 calls in North Little Rock. A little bit more than half of those were emergencies that were classed as either life-threatening or non-life-threatening emergencies. You'll notice, though, in the bottom left-hand corner, fully a quarter of the runs that we respond to are either canceled en route or no patient transport occurs. Slide, please. This shows our response times against a 859 standard. Ninety percent of the time on what are considered life-threatening emergencies are, we were on time 94 percent of the time last year. We are allowed a longer response time of 1259 officially. We meet that standard 98.5 percent of the time. But approximately three and a half years ago, Chief Vaughn and I made an informal agreement that we would measure all emergency responses in North Little Rock against the 859 standard, and that's what the combined emergency response refers to. So, we have met that task, and 90 percent of the time, or better. This shows our funding for the entire system, and it's, I would like to emphasize, that Medicare is fully half of the dollars that the system receives. So, any changes in Medicare, which I will speak to later, will have a significant impact on any ambulance service. Slide, please. And as you might expect, salaries are fully 70 percent of the expenses to operate a system.
Does this show 60 percent?
Plus the benefits, sir. 11.7. Slide. This is our, an overview of the operating statement for the year, if you will. It shows expenses and against income. MEMS remains debt-free. We are in solid financial condition. Slide, please. Spent a quick minute on bioterrorism. That MEMS has already made a significant investment in our preparations for bioterrorism. We've had about eight years of experience working with the Pine Bluff Arsenal and the federal program down there, so we had a bit of a leg up. But we've worked closely with your fire department and police department, as well, of course, as on the Little Rock side. And I will mention, this summer, when I make reference to the big one, there will be a federal exercise in Little Rock. We're not supposed to know that it'll be at War Memorial Stadium, but it will be a simulated chemical attack, actually involving, this will be on the street, if you will, so it'll involve volunteers acting out the role of victims of that, of that exercise. So, this will be a major exercise in Little Rock this summer. Slide, please. I just throw this up as a point to remind everybody that simple transport is really not the issue when it comes to a bioterrorism event as far as ambulance services go. We are the medical providers on the street, and frankly, the hospitals would hope that we could address most of the problems there. So, it is a significant challenge for any ambulance company. Slide, please. And this just shows that MEMS does have the ability within our own resources to establish a decon operation. Slide, please. In addition to bioterrorism, I want to talk about three significant challenges that are in our future. Slide. Medicare, for the past two years, I've come before you in my annual report to tell you of the probability that Medicare will change the way we are reimbursed. That did go into effect on 1st of April of this year. This is not a MEMS issue. It is not even a state of Arkansas issue. This is a nationwide issue that has significantly changed the formulas for Medicare reimbursement for ambulance services. It's not unlike what has happened already for doctors, hospitals, and other healthcare providers. Arkansas, though, is among the states that are hurt the most because of the significant change from where we were to where we are in the way the formulas are calculated. We did win some significant short-term gains in our lobbying effort, and specifically that the phase-in period for this adaptation has taken away what we thought would fully be an $800,000 impact in the first year. It is a more palatable quarter million over the next, each of the next four years, accumulating to a $1 million loss of total revenue by 2006. Throughout the state, services will lose fully a quarter of their Medicare monies, which is 12 to 15 percent of what their total revenue is. Slide. Which brings us to ask the question of options. How does a service absorb that kind of a financial impact? Reducing service levels is one option. Cutting staff, coming off of a paramedic standard. One might increase the fees to all other payers, which we consider to be an unrealistic and unfair approach to that. Replace federal dollars with local dollars is, again, something that we are not an advocate for. MEMS has always been subsidy-free. It is our strategy to remain free of local subsidies. Some services will go out of business as a result of this in Arkansas, and we can go back to Congress for more funding, and I'll speak to our strategy on the next slide. We want to maintain and improve our service. MEMS has no intention, despite the revenue loss, to coming off of a paramedic standard or to reduce our response times. In fact, we want to continue to improve the quality of our service. There will be a slight increase in fees, which I'll speak to on the next slide, which reflect a normal adjustment for inflation. It is our intent and strategy to remain free of local subsidies, and we foresee our ability to do that through 2003, even though at this point in time, we expect to operate at a slight loss in 2003. I shouldn't say a slight. There'll be a loss in 2003. The rate increase that I'm reporting to you tonight will allow us to be break-even this year, and we do expect to operate at a slight loss in 2003. And we'll shift our lobbying effort from the regulatory, what was HICFA, now CMS, has been the focus over the past two and a half years, to try to see these rules changed before they were implemented. That fight has been fought. We've won a few battles, but lost the big one. And the big one is the financial bottom line did not change. So, we've already visited with Congressman Snyder, other members of the Ambulance Association within the state, have been to all of our delegation. They're very well informed and very supportive, but it is time now for us to make a significant and a very real effort there for Medicare to reinstate some of the funding, because clearly it is way, way below cost. Medicare's reimbursement is way below what it will cost any ambulance provider to provide service to Medicare recipients. That's fundamentally wrong, and it needs to be fixed. Slide, please. So, the rate increase will go from $398 to $415. If you take the compounding effect of all the rate increases over the past 16 years, including this rate increase, that is less than one-half percent per year. So, that is a number that we're quite proud of, the fact we've been able to control costs. The patient-loaded mileage is a big jump from 550 to 850, but that reflects Medicare's formulas. What Medicare has done to beat this point into the ground is, prior to 1 April, any ambulance service would be reimbursed for four categories of expenses: a base rate, mileage, medications, and supplies. The new rate bundles medications and supplies into the base rate, and the base rate is significantly lower than it is, than it was before. So, it's a double hit. The one increase they allowed was for the mileage, and so if we don't charge it, we can't, as our base rate, we're not allowed to collect it from Medicare. So, that is the reason for that specific adjustment to the mileage. Slide, please. Another concern that we have is a significant national problem that already exists with training and recruiting paramedics. We have seen in the last two years a significant reduction in the number of paramedic students in the state of Arkansas. So, MEMS is very much aware of the requirement to both focus on our recruiting, but also the retention of qualified and experienced people. Slide, please. HIPAA, finally, is the new requirement. The federal government is considering to relaxing somewhat those standards. But HIPAA will have an effect in North Little Rock and our relationship with the fire department, because even first responders will come under the requirement to maintain patient privacy to a very extreme level, a very, a very specific level. And we have about a year to either see those rules relax somewhat, or they will be, we will be in full implementation. So, that is yet one more transitionary issue that we, challenge that we have to face. So, with all of that, I've realized, shared an awful lot of information in a brief time. May I answer any questions? There should be one other summary slide.
Any questions? Well, we're glad, and I understand, what's the, you went over the rate increase.
Yes, sir.
And you don't anticipate any other increase, at least through 2003?
That's correct, sir. And certainly no intention to come to the cities. One point I failed to make, and I need to offer the assurance to the city council here, is that MEMS has an obligation to ensure that revenue generated in serving the population in North Little Rock is not diverted to pay for losses in other parts of our system. We need a couple of months under the new Medicare rules to fully evaluate what the financial impact will be in each district within our system. And if it's necessary for us to, if we are in fact operating at a loss in any part of our system, then I will go back, and I've already made this presentation in person to both the Lone Oak and Marmell City councils, as well as the Grant County Form Court, to make them aware that if we are indeed losing money in supporting those communities, they will be forced with the, to address the question of either making up that loss in a subsidy, or MEMS will politely have to withdraw. But we will not allow revenues generated here or any other part of our system to subsidize losses anywhere else.
Alderman Yildin.
What's worst-case scenario, if we lose all the funding and, I mean, what's the worst-case?
System-wide, about a million dollars.
Okay. So, we're, so, so we'll be looking at making that up through some kind of subsidies, probably, 'cause the rate will already be as high as they probably can go.
Well, what, what, I think, in discussions, what I, what I think we all hope is that lobbying efforts prove successful over the next couple of years. I know today you'll get a copy of a letter that I wrote. I read the article that was in the paper talking about these changes in Medicaid, Medicare reimbursement.
Yes, sir.
And you'll get a copy of the letter I wrote today, that our congressional delegation encouraging them to consider the adverse impact that this is having on the entire state.
Appreciate your support. But I, I do not have, and I will pledge that we will might be looking at subsidies through 2003.
Okay. Alderman Hite.
John is the reasoning behind Medicare, HICFA, CMS's reduction, and Medicare allow all the other amounts that they will pay towards the case medical service. Same reasoning they had in the, with the, excuse me, the same reason they had with the HMOs, where they just, in the other parts of the United States, there was my knowledge that they were paying more for healthcare costs, such as in Miami, or New Jersey, New York, versus Arkansas. They just didn't see it costing the same here.
Right. Well, to ask your question in two ways. One is a legitimate attempt, I think, to control fraud, and illegitimate charges. But what the formula was, basically, is they established a dollar amount they were willing to pay upfront, and then they came up with a formula to divide out how many runs they thought there would be, and that simple division yielded how much they would pay per run, almost a capitation formula. But the other piece of that is the, yes, not unlike what has already happened in hospitals and HMOs, trying to control costs, and in doing so, we've argued that it's so far below cost that one might even suggest there's a potential legal case here.
The office of inspector general is responsible for checking Medicare fraud, is that correct?
Correct.
Are they still about eight years behind?
I don't know that to be the case. You may see in the news that there's actually been successful prosecutions against ambulance providers in Arkansas. Those cases were not eight years old. So, they're not that far behind.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. [inaudible].
Before we go to the communications, you know, when, as you've heard me say before, running for political office is a real sacrifice, and when we have candidates who want to come and introduce themselves to this council, I'm certainly happy to accommodate that. In fact, I invite them to do that, and I see one candidate out in the audience now. Ellen, if you want to come up with the microphone and introduce yourself, we'll be happy to, happy to give you a moment or two at the mic.
Thank you. I won't take very much of your time, 'cause I can see that there's a lot of people that would like this opportunity to be at this microphone. I'm Ellen Reeve. My father is Joe Lester. He, he's, he was an orthopedic surgeon at 1518 Main Street, not too far from here. I can remember when he started in the 60s, and he worked hard for North Little Rock, and I'm excited to see all the growth that is going on in North Little Rock, 'cause we still own that property, and I'm hoping that it just continues to grow. But I just want to tell a little bit about myself. I, I think I have the right kind of experience. I'm running for circuit judge, 7th Division Court. I really do think I have the right kind of experience for that position. I think that's what you need to look at. I have over 50 jury trials underneath my belt, and I've tried everything from misdemeanors to capital felony murders, and that's what you will be hearing, what I would be hearing as a sitting judge, because I would be taking Judge Plaguey's position. I also was a prosecutor for seven years, and I've been in private practice for seven years. I'm also an attorney at Leighton, where I represent dependent neglected children. I've had a great opportunity in my career to represent Plasky and Perry County as a prosecutor, and to be effective, and to work for all of the counties, Plasky and Perry. And I would love the opportunity to serve you as your circuit judge. I won't take very much of your time. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
I don't know if I see any other candidates. Are there any other here? With that, let's go to communications. Do I have...
I accept the file, 111.
Second. I'd like number two and number seven pulled.
Number nine.
Number nine, yes.
Two, seven, and nine. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Dobbins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Would you read number two, and let me ask for a motion, not in its entirety, just, just by title?
This is a memorandum from Bob Ward, Director of Public Works, regarding the leaf vacuum program ending April 13, 2002, for the season.
Have a motion.
We will accept the file.
Second. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Dobbins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
What I want to do before we go on to the next one is I want to point that out to all of our citizens, and make a real asterisk by this communication, and that indicates that, you know, that anyone who has raped or has in the past, since last fall, raped leaves to the curb, we have been on a very reduced service level with regard to that over the last several months, and yet we do it on call. This is simply to announce that this service for the season will be ending Friday, close of business. If anybody has any leaves raped to the curb, they need to call us this week. We will continue to pick up leaves, but they will need to be bagged. If there's anyone who has any leaves that are hidden somewhere in, on their property, we still will pick them up. But after Friday, come next Monday, we don't do the vacuum anymore until next fall. So, please, you know, please pay attention to that, and give us a call this week if you got any raped to the curb. Alderman Thomas?
I'd like to, on Middle Street between Haywood and Atkins, there's an area that we need to...
All right, Mr. Ward here? All right, Mr. Ward, you hear Alderman Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, would you read item seven, just the title?
Yes, sir. This is a letter to you from Chief Vaughn of the fire department regarding his retirement.
Do I have a motion?
Reluctantly, yes.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Dobbins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
That letter indicates that Chief Vaughn, who's been the chief for five, perhaps six years, will be retiring on April 26 of this month. I've asked Chief McCall to, Joe, stand up. Everybody see who you are. I think most everyone knows who you are, to act as interim, should I not designate someone before that date. And, and so, you know, Joe's down there picking up, picking up the oak, and we appreciate his willingness to stand in, and I just wanted to make sure all the council knew who was gonna be the interim chief. Unless I get to the end of the road, I think everyone knows the law indicates that the mayor will, will select the department heads, and that now includes, after legislature acted some six years ago, the fire and police chief. And obviously, I welcome any comments from the council. I hope to at least decide on the approach that I'm gonna take over the next week and 10 days, and so that we'll have an idea of what kind of timetable we're looking at. So, with that, those are the two items I wanted to specifically call the council's attention. Let me just mention a couple of things before we go to item. Well, let's just go ahead and do item nine, then. Would you read item nine, Ms. Whitby?
In its entirety?
In its entirety, please.
Okay. This is a letter dated April 3 to Mayor Hayes. Dear Mayor Hayes, I recently learned that an ordinance had been filed for consideration before the North Little Rock City Council, asking for approval for an all-night music festival scheduled on or about June 2, 2002, on Valentine Road in North Little Rock. I realize that the city of North Little Rock has the zoning rights for this location, but it is outside the city limits and under the jurisdiction of the Plasky County Sheriff's Office. In my official capacity as sheriff of Plasky County, I wish to voice my opposition to this festival and ask the city council not to approve this ordinance. On March 21 of 2002, the staff of the sheriff's office met with the promoters of this event, Cory Call and Chris Boyett, and discussed the music festival. We voiced our concerns about the location, the hours of operation, potential drug use by attendees, and our overall concern for the safety of the participants and the general citizenry. We did discuss each of these issues, and we did not find any satisfactory resolution to any of these concerns. We advised the promoters that the sheriff's office would not approve nor endorse the music festival. Additionally, the sheriff's office has a policy and sets guidelines for off-duty employment. As a part of that policy, we do not authorize any off-duty employment that could bring discredit upon the sheriff's office. Therefore, we will not approve any off-duty employment for security at this festival. If the city council approves this ordinance, it will mandate that the sheriff's office add additional deputies to the enforcement and detention branch to provide security and safety to the citizens and the participants at the music festival. This will be an unanticipated cost and will have a negative impact on an already challenged budget. I feel that the promoter's intent is to conduct an event that is lawful and to provide entertainment to the attendees, attendees, but because of the reasons mentioned previously, I believe this festival has the potential to be a detriment to the attendees and the community. My responsibility as the sheriff of Plasky County is to be proactive regarding crime and to make reasonable decisions regarding the safety of the community. I am adamant the decision to oppose this festival is the right decision. I hope that the city council will agree. Sincerely, Randy Johnson, Plasky County Sheriff.
We will accept and file.
Second. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yildin.
Yes.
Dobbins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Hite.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Let me, let me just make a couple announcements before we, before we go to the agenda items. First of all, in speaking of the fire department a little earlier, which you can call, let me invite anyone to the new fire station, number eight, which will be opening. The old Amboy Station now will be brand-new as of, actually tomorrow will formally open, although I think they've already moved in. 6550 MacArthur, that's the new fire station, number eight, tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Anyone's welcome to come and help us cut a ribbon. Let me add that if, if anyone would care to join us tomorrow at 11:00, there'll be a press conference regarding Riverfest down in our riverfront park. And then, at 2:00 on Wednesday afternoon, this is a good week for us, down at the arena on the northwest corner, the Arkansas Sports Hall of Fame will be announcing, actually not announcing, but will be turning a shovel for the construction of that new facility that will begin to add those kinds of things that we want to have in this community, that will be 365 day a year, or certainly business day a year, activities that will cause people to want to come over here day in and day out. So, all who care are also invited to that event. One final thing that, you know, that will be of some interest. I've just gotten an email from Joe Gertz, and it's my information that our hydro plant tomorrow afternoon is likely for the second time in its history to become a submarine. Because of the flows, although we're going after the Razorback, we've got our own submarine, lease submarine doors, and it looks like the hydro plant will be underwater sometime tomorrow afternoon, and that will restrict, if that's the case, obviously, access by boat down from John Cook, I mean, from Cook's Landing Road. So, because of the flows principally, or the rains principally in Oklahoma and northwestern Arkansas, we're getting ready to back down the submarine hatches on our hydro plant, and it looks like we're gonna go underwater again. Obviously, there won't be a whole lot of generation going on over the next several days.
Won't be any more than normal.
Well, we've been doing pretty good this year.
Oh, okay.
Actually, we've been doing pretty good this year.
Are you gonna stay down there with it while it's underwater?
I went out there last time.
And somebody's got to.
It's an interesting feeling, having the Arkansas River flow over the top of your head. Some people just suit, some of us go down there and not come back up.
What time you go, what ship you gonna have?
I don't have a shit. I don't want to be around the hydro.
With that, let's go to old business.
Resolution 0235, Alderman Gibson and Yildin.
Please hold it.
Resolution 0245, Alderman Yildin.
I'd like to withdraw it at this time.
Ordinance 0219, Mayor Hayes.
Let's hold that.
Ordinance 0225, Alderman Yildin.
We're holding that pending the planning commission's hearing, which, what date is that, Robert?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, which is the...
Is it next Tuesday?
18th. Okay. Thank you. That's the planning commission, yes.
Next item? Next item.
Ordinance oh-two twenty-six, Alderman Thomas and Barry.
Just hold that also.
Ordinance oh-two twenty-seven, Mayor Hayes.
Where are we on that? Ms. Whitby, how many times have been up here?
It's been read three times, and it was amended twice at the last meeting.
Okay, how much more do we have before we have to act on that?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit?
About three more times.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby, I appreciate that.
Ms. Whitby? You sure didn't dance much the other night.
With that, let me, let me hold that, but I'm going to ask...
You can bring it up.
...be held on this at the next council meeting. Please, I know I've visited with Alderman Gibson and several others about some revisions that probably need to be addressed. One thing that, that I had thought was a little bit more dealt with, but I understand it wasn't as dealt with, wasn't dealt with as much as I would have thought, would have to do with riverfront development, so, you know, I'm going to look a little bit closer at that. Unless there's any comments on that, I'll just hold it till the next council meeting and have a public hearing on it.
Mayor, this, because the plan does, there's a separate plan on riverfront development, I'm not sure that's ever been totally adopted, and I think we need to bring that in as a total, separate issue from this.
Okay. Next item.
Ordinance oh-two thirty, Alderman Bestel.
I'm going to withdraw that legislative.
Let's go to new business.
Resolution oh-two fifty, Mayor Hayes.
Let me call it.
This is a resolution authorizing execution of a contract with the Holloway Firm Incorporated for Professional Engineering Services to provide a preliminary plan for Count Massey roadway alignment and appropriating eight thousand five hundred dollars for such services.
Move for adoption?
Second. Second. On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me just mention that this will, Mr. Vaughn, would you come to the microphone and tell me if I'm saying anything wrong? This will give us the basics that we need to go forward in discussing the creation of an improvement district out on Count Massey, to basically utilize the funding from that improvement district, should one be created, to do somewhere, well, I think a million to a million and a half dollars' worth of improvements, basically, again, from Marmell Boulevard to the point on Count Massey where it turns right. That real estate on both sides is wholly within North Little Rock. When it gets out to the end of the road before it turns right, which remains Count Massey, then it becomes Marmell and North Little Rock. So, I want to make sure everyone understands that this is dealing principally with that one segment of the road, and that we're looking to with this tool to fund it through the creation of an improvement district. Mr. Vaughn?
That's correct. We hope to do advanced preliminary engineering to have some assurance of cost, cross-section, so that we can meet with property owners, hold neighborhood meetings. This will be a funded road tax. We have agreements from numerous developers out there to participate in an improvement district. It's something we've not tried before, but it is something that's needed. We've not been able to get federal funds for this project, so we think this is probably the only way to expedite the project.
See, did we vote on that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
We did?
Yes, sir.
All right, next item. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Resolution oh-two fifty-one, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution approving sale of equipment used to maintain the Camp Robinson Golf Course.
We've read adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
We've had a good partnership with the, with our Parks and Recreation Department through Steve Ross and running that golf course at Camp Robinson, and I understand that this authorizes us to sell that, some of that equipment out there to one who's going to continue the operation, so as far as we understand, that operation will remain opening, open and available for use, and I assume public use out there for those who might want to enjoy it. With that, next item.
Ordinance oh-two thirty-one, Alderman Height.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance to amend North Little Rock Code, section ten dash one, interference with enforcement, first reading.
Please spend the rules place it on a second reading.
Second. On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend North Little Rock Code, section ten dash one, interference with enforcement, second reading.
At some point, I want somebody to explain this to me.
Please spend the rules place it on its third reading.
Is there a second? Second. On the motion to spend.
Do I get to hear first?
Well, just as soon as you vote. There's already got a motion made and seconded, we're not going to stop that, so...
Where's your camp picture?
Is this for second, is this for second reading?
This is for second reading.
Second.
How do you vote, Alderman?
I voted yes.
Hey, Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, now you want to talk about it? Let's talk about it.
Where's Mr. Grace?
No, you just...
Mr. Grace is very knowledgeable and for the role in behind this legislation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Height has the floor, and he has, I'm going to give him the right to delegate that floor.
I'm yielding to Mr. Grace.
What this is, is an effort to stop people from letting cats out of their traps and tripping their traps. It's very simple. We go out and take a cat trap to a location, someone complains they have cats on the property, we won't remove, and as soon as we leave, people who don't want to catch the cats go over and trip it, or take the food out of it, or what's the cats called, they release the cat, and then, that's about it.
You might, you might inform Mr. Gibson as to which, which cats we're trying to trap.
Just to avoid we get calls on them.
Okay. It's been a problem out at Cook's Landing with the feral cat population out there that we're trying to eliminate, and we've had people out there that have gotten in the way of us, of the Animal Control Department, doing their job out there. They've, they've stolen some traps, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's not, this goes on all over town, people are tripping these traps and letting cats out.
But it can, it kind of was magnified here in recent weeks and months out at Cook's Landing, but that's the reasoning behind this legislation. Anybody else?
All right, Alderman, Height has presented his legislation. Questions, comments?
I have a question as a city attorney. What will this piece, specific piece of legislation do for interference regardless of interference with governmental operations, that sort of thing? I mean, that's what I'm asking.
Certainly, the big difference is if you have an animal control officer who's being interfered with, he can issue a citation right there. If you have an animal control officer being interfered with, and you want to cite him under the state statute, they'd have to call a police officer. Police officer would have to come out and then write the stat, the citation, because animal control officers are not state-certified law enforcement officers.
Okay, that was my, that was my question.
Alderman, Thomas? Alderman, Bestel?
Is there any fine, lady that goes along with it?
It would be up to the judge, we're going to recommend a fifty-dollar fine to him.
Well, I don't know, is there legislation?
Yeah, anytime we adopt an ordinance that just says it's unlawful, it automatically goes by law to section one dash seven, that says up to a five-hundred-dollar fine. So, a judge can go anywhere from a dollar to five-hundred dollars. In my experience, if somebody was hitting an animal control officer, it'd be five-hundred dollars, if somebody was a nuisance, it'd be twenty-five dollars. Judges do a good job in their discretion.
I guess, I've just never heard this problem before, maybe this, maybe it's new, that's the reason, I guess I'm a little hesitant to vote for you.
Any other questions, Alderman, Barry?
I just want to know, are you sure we're not in direct conflict with any state law about issuing citations?
Never met at all.
Okay, it looks like to me the basic opportunity that this would afford is our folks to issue a citation themselves, rather than have to go through and utilize the state statute, and then that would necessitate getting a warrant, and then having the warrant served, and doing it through a much more cumbersome procedure. Alderman, Robbins?
I was just wondering, yes, now that if we pass this, then the animal control officer can issue a citation on the spot, right there, but they're still not certified law enforcement officers.
You might be correct, they cannot issue a citation for a state law violation, they can issue citation for municipal violations. So, for instance, let's say you had an individual stopping an animal control officer from doing their job, they would have to call a police officer, would have to pull a police officer off the street, come to the spot, and then cite him for the state statute. What this does is allow the animal control officer to issue the citation.
A violation of the municipal.
I'm just thinking from a safety standpoint, then, you know, if you happen to get a police officer involved, you probably would want that second person there to observe the actions of the animal control officer as well as the other person, a neutral person there, knowing that, hey, you know, just in case anybody gets out of line. And that's my, that's my caution to it. So, Chief, are you having any concerns with this? If, if I may?
Sure. No, sir, I don't have any concerns with it. In fact, after reading over it again tonight, I think it's a good idea. I mean, certainly, if animal control needs a police out there, we'll respond immediately, but there are a lot of cases where, just as Billy was explaining, where they have a case of not a physical confrontation, but more of an animal control issue, where, you know, if, and it's nonviolent, then certainly we would prefer that they be able to handle it, and, but certainly, anytime that they feel that they're in danger, we'll be there if they call.
So, if they're, if they're feeding a cat there, a stray cat, that's in a violation then?
I'm sorry... Not on this, Alderman, that the feeding the cat wouldn't have anything to do with this. In a direct sort of way, if they, if they went out and, you know, were trying to enforce something, and somebody, you know, committed this act, then they could, you know, do that. So, this applies to virtually everything that is in their responsibility, not just the cat issue. Alderman, Barry?
If I could, I'd like to get Billy back up, I think I can, I think I can kind of clear up a little bit, we had a long discussion about the cats. There was a, there was kind of a misunderstanding about what was going on with the cats at Cook's Landing. They thought that we were just taking them and killing them every day, and that's what, and that's what got to a lot of people, I believe. It kind of came to a head, and if you listened to what, if I'm not mistaken, Billy, we've not killed any animals that were adoptable.
Not this year, we've not.
Not this year. And, of course, I like the cats there, because they, they do a service for me, they clean up all the bait that our people are leaving their trash behind and their bait, and they, and so I kind of like the feral cats, but we will never actually get all the feral cats at Cook's Landing.
That river's going to take care of it, I think, in the day or so.
Say one thing.
No, they'll be out the trees, you don't have to...
I just hope this is the last word, this isn't, this ordinance is not just a cat trap issue, this has to do with all of the functions, the normal daily activities of the Animal Control Department.
Yes, sir.
People getting in between you and you carrying out your duties.
Right, but the way the ordinance is worded right now, it deals with someone who takes an animal away from us. We can, we can already write them a citation for that, it's just it does not cover our cat traps, and we need, that's an everyday problem, somebody releasing cats out of the traps, and then the person who called in gets irate with us because we didn't catch the cat. So, it's, I think it's at the best interest for everyone to get this done, so we can stop that.
Any other discussion? Let's get a motion for adoption on third, final. Motion made by Alderman, seconded by Alderman Bestel on third, final, if you call the robust whip it.
She needs to read it the third time, sir.
All right, good idea.
This is an ordinance to amend North Little Rock Code, section ten dash one, interference with enforcement, third and final reading.
Now, now I heard the motion by Alderman, Barry, and Bestel, on the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
It's an emergency clause, Gibson.
Emergency clause?
Yes, sir.
If we don't pass the emergency clause, when does it go into effect?
Thirty days.
Sixty days.
Sixty days. I'd like to move to amend the emergency clause, the disordinance shall go into effect on May one.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin? Dobins?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
It's five to three, to amend the emergency.
The motion is, the motion is adopted, the legislation amended.
Move for adoption is amended.
Is there a second? On the motion.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yildin?
Yes.
Dobins?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Barry?
Yes.
Bestel?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Billy, that will go into effect May first.
I think that'll give us sufficient time to get it published where everybody understands, and there will be no misunderstanding.
and there will be no misunderstanding. I think we had a misunderstanding on the previous one and just kind of like to avoid those things.
Next item?
Ordinance O two thirty-two, Alderman Vestal.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance rezoning certain property located at ninety-two seventy Monmeel Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R four to I two, to allow for outside storage of boats and RVs by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Spin rules, put on secondary?
There's an amendment coming around on it that just changes one little bit of it.
If we could take the third reading and then amend it, that'd be...
Yeah, I heard the motion. Motion made and seconded to spin the rules on that motion, Mr. Whitby?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yeah.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
This is an ordinance rezoning certain property located at ninety-two seventy Monmeel Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R four to I two, to allow for outside storage of boats and RVs by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
Who's been ruled, place the ordinance on its third reading? Second. On the motion to spend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at ninety-two seventy Monmeel Boulevard in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R four to I two, to allow for outside storage of boats and RVs by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
Alderman Vestal moves.
That we replace the existing ordinance with the updated ordinance. I believe the only difference is it changes from I two to I one in all the indicated, in all the places where they're indicating the legislation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the motion to amend?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Who put option is amended? Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance O two thirty-three, Alderman Vestal.
Hold that, please.
Next item is ordinance O two thirty-four, Alderman Thomas.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance rezoning certain property located at eighty-seven ten Faulkner Lake Road in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R two to C four zone, to allow a contractor's office by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to spin the rules, place it on second reading?
And second?
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And witcher? Yes. An ordinance rezoning certain property located at eighty-seven ten Faulkner Lake Road in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R two to C four zone, to allow a contractor's office by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
I move the rules to suspend it, place it on third reading.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. An ordinance rezoning certain property located at eighty-seven ten Faulkner Lake Road in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, from R two to C four zone, to allow a contractor's office by amendment ordinance number thirty-one seventy-one of the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
On the question?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance O two thirty-five, Alderman Gibson?
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance allowing special use for a daycare center requiring an R five zone and an R three zone for certain real property located at nineteen West Twenty-Fifth Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Who's been ruled, place it on second reading?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And ordinance allowing special use for a daycare center requiring an R five zone and an R three zone for certain real property located at nineteen West Twenty-Fifth Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
Get who's been ruled, place it on third reading?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And witcher? Yes. An ordinance allowing special use for a daycare center requiring an R five zone and an R three zone for certain real property located at nineteen West Twenty-Fifth Street in the city of North Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
Alderman?
Mayor, this is at the half a block off of Pike Avenue at the base of the Fort Roosevelt. Going to VOTAC and one of the things that they found is a great need for people who have children that are going to VOTAC and need a place for their children.
May I ask a question, Mr. Gibson? Mr. Gibson, not too long ago, you and I had a short discussion about daycare centers and proliferate.
And there's gonna be more of them.
Yeah, and there's gonna be more of them. Is there any other way to handle them? Or is this the most effective way to handle these and regulate them?
About ten years ago, we had a different way to handle them and it didn't seem to work. By putting them in what is essentially a special zone, everybody around there has to be notified. And we've made a very concerted effort not to have them. I know we've turned a few of them down because they were in neighborhoods where you had elderly people that slept at different hours and you want bedrooms, playgrounds and bedrooms up against each other. And so, we're gonna see a lot of these as part of this welfare to work and people are gonna have to have a place to have their children. I like the system we have now because we have the opportunity to at least visit with the neighbors instead of it just going in and nobody knew it was going in.
Alderman Berry?
I like that too. I like the special use. I think that most everything we bring should be special.
No.
Well, I mean, it's a special use, so it's, so if they can, as long as it operates like this, it's gonna be this. If they close down the daycare center, then it reverts back. So, I mean, that's what's good about special use in this situation.
Alderman Thomas?
Do we still notify the people?
Sure.
Two hundred foot.
All right, I have motion adopted on third vote.
Second? Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin's?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, ordinance O two thirty-six, Alderman Height and Barry?
We're gonna withdraw that, please. And I guess the explanation is that we're gonna draw it based on the letter, our decision is based on the letter received from the Office of the Sheriff of Rainn Johnson, Plaskey County.
Next item is public comment. I don't see any other items, Mr. Whitby?
No, sir.
Would any council member care to make any comments?
I guess there's one thing. I didn't get a chance a while ago. No, Chief Fawn is retiring. How many years actually did he serve on with the... I know that Chief...
Thirty-five total years. The last five, six years as chief. So a total of thirty-five years he's been with the North Rock Fire Department.
Got to recognize that, though.
And if he were here, we'd do it. We hope he makes the next council meeting so we can tell him personally how the council members would love to do that, you know, if he's... He was Bill President, sir. That's right. That's right. He had surgery, so if not, then we'll make sure he gets a chance to come up here and we can thank him personally. With that, the microphone's open. Any council, any member of the audience here to make any comments? State your name and the microphone's yours, Mr. Ard.
Thank you, sir. I'm James Ard. I just want to thank you for the ultimate, withdrew the one about parking on the grass.
Do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Sharon. My name is Sharon Berry. I'm Gary Berry's wife. The views that I'm fixing to express are not necessarily the views of my husband. Thank you so much for affording me this opportunity. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Rhodes for all of the work that he's doing with our ballpark. It is greatly, greatly appreciated. My husband and I don't always agree on political matters, but there is one item that we always agree on. And that's the item that comes with our youth. We are both involved in Burns Park Little League Baseball. Can anybody on the council tell me how many sanctioned Little League fields we have in the Plaskey County area? I know you know. One, and that's at Burns Park. We're the only park in the Plaskey County area whose kids even qualified to go to the Little League World Series. Now, that doesn't always happen. It hasn't happened, I think, since, was it nineteen ninety-two or nineteen ninety-four? We did have a team from Burns Park who did play in the Little League World Series. We are also proud to say that A.J. Burnett, who now pitches for the Florida Marlins, came through our program. And that's quite an achievement. It really is. We're just absolutely proud of him. There's been other good baseball players that have come through our system that made it to the pros, maybe for a short time. Right now, A.J. is, boy, he's the man. He's the man. And he did it the other day, and I was really proud of him. We've been associated with the city of North Little Rock for fifty-one years. That's an awful long time. We are extremely grateful for everything that the city does to help us. I believe strongly in freedom of speech and I believe strongly in freedom of the press. It is essential to our democracy. But along with freedom comes responsibility. My husband and I play a game. I mean, it's a game that we always play. When the North Little Rock Times calls, I stand beside him. And when he gets off the phone, we play the, how are we gonna twist those words game? Sometimes I win and sometimes he wins. But what I am referring to is in reference to the North Little Rock Times article about girls softball. Only half of this article was written. And it left everybody with the impression that there was a lot of funny things going on with girls softball. So if you will allow me to tell the other side of the story, I would be eternally grateful. Mr. Rhodes stated in the article that girls softball only turned in half of their report. What was neglected was the forms and the processes were sent to the wrong address. That was never mentioned in the article. Their books were also at the auditor. So they couldn't turn in half of their report because they didn't have their books. Okay? So as a result of this, as a result of the infractions, there were infractions, but they were accounting infractions. They were not infractions involving misappropriation. The same accounting practices that they were cited on, we could easily be cited on in our own ballpark. Okay? I can almost guarantee you, right now, there is not one U organization in this city right now paying the three percent sales, or three cent sales tax. And it's nice to know that, you know, we're liable for it because now we can pay it. And we will be absolutely grateful, I mean gracious, to pay this three cent sales tax. But why beat up on girls softball? As a matter of fact, I've talked to several people that run programs, similar programs across the states, across the county, in other cities in Arkansas, in other cities in other states. They're shaking their heads, wondering what is going on? Why are these things happening in our dear city? We are, when we accept board positions, and I am the safety director for North Little Rock Voice Baseball. Gary is a board member at large. When we accept these positions, we only go by what our predecessors set for us. Okay? Our predecessors teach us the proper way to do things. When we are not doing things properly, it's because we, our predecessors may not have known to do it or we've not been taught right by our predecessors. Okay? So why should we be beat up, put out? Why should we be treated like criminals in the North Little Rock Times? Because we're doing things the way we were taught for them to do, be done. Mr. Rhodes also stated that softball doesn't cooperate. When Mr. Rhodes came here two years ago, he saw a thirty-four thousand dollar electric bill from girls softball. He asked that the lights be turned off when the fields were not in use. The next year, they had a seventeen thousand dollar light bill. And I think that's cooperating. I really do. The ten dollars per child was not implemented until Mr. Rhodes came to North Little Rock. We didn't have to pay ten dollars a child. North Little Rock softball, they've got a cancelled check for this ten dollars. So, you know, I don't know. Should we be held accountable? You bet we should. We should all be held accountable. Our association should be held accountable. Everybody should be held accountable. We're accountable to two organizations. We're accountable to the city of North Little Rock and we're accountable to our national organizations. We're accountable to Little League. We're accountable to ASA softball. Mr. Rhodes stated in this article that he may not renew any of the contracts next year. That's very sad. Not only would that hurt future baseball and softball programs at the high school, it will also hurt the boys and girls who play in these programs. We have eight hundred boys and girls who play baseball and softball. These boys and girls either will stay home and do nothing. That scares me. That really does. Or they will play in other cities. It's the ones that stay home, I'm telling you, that I'm very, very worried about. Because we need to keep our kids active. We really do. When a family moves into an area, they look to places where their kids have places to go. And the place offers a wide range of sports, not just soccer, not just baseball, not just softball, but a wide range of sports. We will no longer be attractive if you want to take away the boys' baseball and the girls' softball. We're not gonna be attractive anymore to people, families moving into the North Little Rock area. This in turn is gonna hurt our schools because our school's funding is based on enrollment. And our enrollment's gonna go down. And I think we're not doing a good job anyway when it comes to our kids. We do not provide enough places for them to go and enough things for them to do. This leads to higher crime, more drug problems, and less attractiveness to the city.